Hi Dahlia.
Hi.
Hey, everyone.
Hi.
Tara?
This is Tara. Michael's not coming tonight, just so you know.
You said M. Oh, Michael. Yep, yeah, Michael. Okay. Okay, right. So, and George is gonna be late.
And Pete, we're not sure. Yeah, Jackie?
Yes, Pete will not be on this evening either.
Okay, okay. Then I think we will just go ahead and we'll start and then George will join us when he can a bit later. Okay, so it is, I'll call the work session to order at 4:01. Okay. Yes, roll call, please.
Megan Klaassen.
Here in Denver.
Jessica Lee.
This is Jess, Colorado Springs.
Pete Lee. Michael Stone. Dahlia Casillas.
Dahlia here in Colorado Springs.
George Welsh. And Ida Wilding.
Here, Colorado Springs.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. This is Ida. Thanks. So I am excited about this meeting today. I think it's really cool. We're gonna have a discussion about two different committees with the possibility of perhaps having more support in these two areas, moving things along. Two critical areas, finance and legislative. So we wanted to talk about those people who want to be assigned to each committee, who, you know. Yeah, so a lead for each one. We would want that. So let's talk about that. Tara, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, so this is Tara. So we decided at the retreat we would have two committees. So Finance Committee, some people did let me know their preference and some haven't. So you haven't been assigned then. If you had, you have been assigned if you'd rather move to a different area, though, that's fine too. And some people wanted to be part of both, which is also fine. Not required. We're just asking you to join one. So Finance Committee includes four. Ida, Jess, Dahlia, and Megan. So you all are good with that committee assignment? This is Jess, yes. Okay. And then the Legislative Committee includes Ida, George, Michael, and Pete. So those are the groups.
Hi there, George.
Hi.
Yes, this is Ida. Just so you know, everyone, George has joined us. So he's here today. Yeah, where are you? Yeah, George, where are you?
I'm sitting on the lawn of the Sawatch County Courthouse in, in Sawatch, Colorado. Doing a little work down in the valley today. Beautiful day.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Jess?
This is Jess. Uh, thank you for, to Ida, for both committees because, you know, we have only girls on one and boys on the other one. So interesting. Looking like a middle school dance. Segregation.
Jess, my, my wife won't let me run the finances myself, so.
Yes, I was just saying, yeah, maybe we should have a prom. That would be fun, yeah? Okay, but yes, I agree. I think with those two committees, the skills align there. I do believe that, yes, you know, if you, I thought I would be just as the chair in both. And again, we want to make sure that, you know, the communication is open and all of that. So yeah, I thought I would be on both. I'm excited about this process getting started this evening. Uh, yeah, Tara, go on.
Yeah, this is Tara. So I would, I would like to see if anybody's interested to take the lead with me on the committees for both groups. Anyone willing to? Raise your hand.
So I, this is Ida. Yeah, I just want to clarify, just the lead. That would be to like run the meetings, do you mean, like?
Yeah.
Focus on what the priorities are. Okay, that type of thing, you know, and then we'll keep the superintendent Tara updated. Yeah, so just a lead for the committee, you know. Really just for the meetings, George?
Yeah, happy, happy to do it on my committee, Tara, until Pete gets smart and takes it away from me, okay?
Well, and there he is. Pete is here. Yes, he just showed up. Yes, this is Ida. Yeah. You just made Pete show up, George.
I was hovering around the door trying to get in. I apologize. But now I'm with you and yeah, look forward to serving with you on that Legislative Committee under your leadership, George.
Great. Great. Okay, yeah, Jess?
This is Jess. So I'm just wondering, what do we think for the Finance Committee? Do we think we would set up goals or, I mean, I I would like to support, but lead, I don't know, that feels a little bit intimidating. So, I don't know. I mean, I'm trying to think of what the leadership role would look like.
Right, right. Yeah, Tara?
This is Tara. Yes, I share with Ida this morning a developed template for us to use as we start these committees. I thought a template, we will work through different questions. For example, first, we'd want to identify someone to lead with me, the point person for me to work with, to figure out the agenda, figure out each meeting's focus. I don't think it would require a lot of additional work. And second, we'd identify what our current needs, current gaps. What are the needs? What are the gaps? From that, we can establish goals and set specific goals and prioritize what we'd do first, and then from there, establish an action plan, what to do, how to address. And also, I think, for some work, for example, Finance, maybe we'd want to invite specific people to join. I assume we would want Beth involved with the Finance, at least for some discussion. Maybe we want lobbyist for the legislative part, you know, where we are with the discussion, what that looks like.
Jess?
This is Jess. If I, I would like to volunteer for working with you for the Finance Committee, if that's okay with you. Ida, Megan, and Dahlia?
Yeah.
I mean, if you all are okay with that, I would like to volunteer. Great.
Okay, this is Ida. I'm really excited that we have set these two up. Oh, yeah, Pete?
Um, I'd be happy to work with Tara as lead on the Legislative Committee.
Okay. That's, that's perfect. Okay. This is Ida. I really appreciate your enthusiasm. Yes, everybody has these unique skills, you know, while at the same time, I know it does take some time to get everybody situated and to set up these meetings and everything. We do feel like it's, you know, worth it to have these different work sessions, to have these different committees with those. And to focus on those priorities like Tara mentioned, be able to move those around and yeah, be able to support CSB better once those are identified. So Tara, just wanting to clarify, so you're meaning like the work session, the first hour, we'll have one committee meet. The second hour, a, the different committee would meet. Okay, so for today, what's the plan? What do we want to start with? Like just more, just like brainstorming, like a rough draft of ideas, are you thinking?
Yes, so for today, I think we just start with some initial brainstorming, needs, gaps. Doesn't matter to me which committee we do first or which we do second.
Okay, okay. Oh, yeah, Jess?
Sorry. This is Jess. Before we really dive into each of these topics, during the retreat, we did talk about the form of how we run things. So during work sessions, maybe we use the first hour for one committee and then the second hour for the second one. I mean, I wouldn't mind if we discussed that also because that way we can make sure people know which part to show up for, or how are we planning to split our efforts too? So I'm just not real sure, but I just think that that's an important part too.
Yes, yes. Oh, whoever's, oh, yeah, Megan, go ahead.
Just a question, not necessarily a suggestion, but I thought, I thought we were gonna be running them like concurrently. So we'd be like in two breakout rooms and one group would be meeting in the other. And then I don't know if we bring the notes back at the next work session? Or maybe like report out at the beginning of the next work session and then split again? That's just what I was thinking.
This is Ida. So that would be that we would need a clone for me and Tara, right? Because we're in both meetings. So, um, no, but I get what you're saying. Let me see. Let's see, I'm trying to think if that could work, you know, for the open meetings law. You know, because we are all considered panelists and there are other people who are watching these work sessions. So the logistics of those breakout rooms, we would have to figure out first, I think. Yeah, Tara, did you have an idea?
This is Tara. Um, and there's a few challenges with that. One, I think, is me. I think it's important that I'm involved in both committees and I don't think it's possible to record separate rooms
Right, right.
at the same time. And we have to be able to record for open meetings law.
And this is Ida. And I'm wondering if we, you know, feel like maybe like an hour at the beginning and then maybe once we, you know, it's more fluid that we're just having like a half an hour and then we're able to spend that hour together, you know, and to update each committee on what the other one's doing. What do you think about that?
This is Tara. I think that we can just go ahead and decide which committee first, which committee second. And that means I'm not sure how that works for attendance and roll call. If we need to just do it two times, one at the beginning, if you're involved with the committee that meets at four, show up, roll call. And then if you're involved in the committee that meets at five, join at five. You know what I mean? We just need to decide which is first and which is second. And I think it'll work out.
Yeah, Jess?
This is Jess. So I think it'll evolve with time. I mean, because we're just implementing this concept, right? So maybe we start with 45 minutes for each and then save, I don't know, 30 minutes at the end to all come together to ensure that everybody understands what's happened. So that means we each need to set up and because, well, let me back up. We each need to commit to this work time that we already have agreed to on the schedule moving forward for the year. So maybe we just decide I'm gonna show up to this committee at that time. You know, 45 minutes and then come back 45 minutes later for the debrief from the work session, you know, what happened on the legislative group, you know, and then just come back.
Yeah, Tara?
This is Tara. Yeah, that could work, or we could also just add in the regular board meetings, topics, summary, debrief from each group and that way people don't have to wait around. If you're first, you don't have to join, leave, join. Maybe we could just add just a regular topic for updates in our regular board meetings.
Yeah, this is Ida. It seems, yes, that we have the agreement to go ahead. Well, like that we would vote like four to five, but we still have to decide, you know, who's gonna go four to five and which committee is gonna go five to six. So what would you like? You know, we can make it easy, you know, like, I don't know, four to five, you can see here it's easy to do with a handshake, like, do we want four or five? You guys can just put it up. Which committee wants four? Which committee wants five? Or we'll vote or, I mean, yeah, just go ahead. So you, yeah, just put your hand up. Who wants four o'clock? Who wants five o'clock?
I can't see your, okay.
So you want five or four, five? Do you want four or five? Which, it doesn't matter to you two, you're saying? Okay. Okay, so we'll have the Finance Committee at four and the Legislative Committee at five. Okay? All right, yeah? And that means George, Pete, yes, you can cook dinner for, you know, the rest of us. Have time to do that. Yes, we'll have some dinner. Okay, so perfect. So that's settled. So for now, we can just go through, you know, the best, like, we want to see, you know, if there's any frustrations or talk about the solutions, you know, through that. Yeah, so again, four o'clock Finance, five o'clock Legislative Committee. So, yeah. And it's gonna be the first Wednesday of the month for these committees. Okay, so now let's go ahead and we'll just briefly talk about the Finance Committee, that we can do some brainstorming and then we'll just quickly throw out some ideas of what we think are most important things that we need to focus on, those priorities. Let's just start with that for right now. Megan?
It would be helpful for me to hear from Tara about where she needs, where the school needs the most support financially. And obviously, Tara, you have a better understanding of the JBC and what's ahead or not ahead in terms of funding. And then we can maybe decide how we can best support you in the school.
Yes, yes, okay.
Yep, this is Tara. Yes, I have started to compile my own dialogue with Beth this morning too, as well as her thoughts and her ideas. So I could, so she, we could share her perspective. I'll also ask my leadership team tomorrow during our meeting. Maybe there's something that I've overlooked, but from my perspective, there's a few things. Last year, we started talking about pay for our staff, especially because it's a very specific skill set that staff need in addition to just regular education. ASL proficiency is needed to be able to work with blind, low-vision students as well as a very specialty skill set. And, you know, but they're really paid the same as regular general special ed teachers. So we did start discussion about that last year. So that's one. We know the cost of living continues to increase every year, really. We have not requested any type of operating budget increase since I've been in this role. So we're running with the same operating while the cost of operations gets higher and it's a real challenge because the costs are going up. And so that's number two. Number three, currently, we do get some donations other types of donations, some monetary, some other types. And really, they find us. We are not actively really advertising or looking, seeking donations. We don't really. We depend fully on the budget that we get from the state. And I know some schools have a foundation in place where they're actively pursuing those donations and we don't. And we haven't. I think really, since I've worked at the school, we've been very passive, very lucky that someone donates to us through their will or decides to make a donation, but we have not actively sought this, any type of additional support or funding. We're not, and I think there's opportunities there. Fourth, grants. We kind of look for grants. Mostly what we apply for is through the state. The state has a variety of grants within CDE. But again, there's opportunities there for different kinds of grant funding as well as, I think, both looking at our state budget, but other opportunities are there that we have not actively. Our one big challenge with the state budget, well, a few really. One is the state budget itself. Right now, this year and, or perceivably next year as well, is not positive. There is a deficit. But trying to clearly explain to our JBC analysts, sometimes they look at the staff we have and they look at how many students and they ask me, what's up, you know? And how can we truly reflect the needs of students? And we have a residential program. And they look at ratios and they question why we need more FTE or why we need more funding. So how can we better clearly paint that picture of the needs of our students than that they're intense and looking at ratios? And I think the last part of this is, so we have big ideas for expanding programs, especially outreach, early education. But how can we start think about planning when it requires additional FTV? For program expansion too, we would love to have little language learners program throughout the state.
Yeah, definitely.
In various regions of Colorado. So expanding programs and how, I mean, how do we address that? So that's my list, my initial thoughts.
This is Ida. I completely agree with what you just mentioned as far as priorities. And I will let you know, now Colorado Springs at, that is increasing the utilities, they're increasing their prices as well. So just like residents too are feeling that. You know, and so it's hard to meet that cost of living just for that. Yeah, so I agree. I see what you're talking about. Any other priorities anybody wants to add to Tara's list? Well, and for me, it's not really like a top priority, but, you know, the grants, looking and seeking out those grants, I agree. There's a lot of residential schools all over are, you know, supporting like the VOK program. And they don't have, like, we, we have here the BTL program, you know, that's something that we have here, but able to convince the JBC to show that, yes, we quote unquote do have four schools here. The deaf school, the blind school, BTL, the BTL program, the residential piece to it. That's a lot for one school to handle. And that is something that, yeah, I believe should be one of those priorities that you mentioned. Any other thoughts on what those priorities or an additional priorities anyone has? Do you feel like those are good? You're good with what Tara mentioned? You're okay with that starting focus on those priorities she just mentioned? Okay. All right. We'll go from there. So, yeah, we'll start with those. And the next meeting, we'll focus on those priorities she just mentioned. And so now we'll move on with the Legislative Committee. Is that what we should do, Tara? Do you think? Move on? Or is there more you want to add about the Finance Committee?
This is Tara. I think for me, a question more for Pete about how, well, right now, what we know about this year's budget and next year's forecasted budget, how, how much energy do we invest right now with requesting state funding or do we shift our focus more on other fundings for this year until the state budget is more stable? I mean, I don't know. I don't want to invest so much with what we already know. Knowing that there's gonna be cuts next year. Do you know what I mean? So is this the best time to pursue that? Or do we shift gears to more of alternate funding, foundation, grants for this year? And then see what happens and then shift next year? I mean, I'm just curious
Yeah.
what your perspective is.
Sure, yes. So Pete and then, or Pete, George, who's first? Pete, you wanna, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I think you might be guided by our lobbyists on that question. That I think that they may have some pretty good insights as to whether or not it makes sense to start talking about our budgetary needs. When the legislature doesn't start moving into that until you get sort of the governor's budget that is presented to the joint budget committee. And then the joint budget committee meets in the fall to try to get and further understand where the governor's coming from. But I think Tara, my best thought on that is to ask for guidance from legislative services, Garen and company as to the best timing to frame our approaches. And then what specific approaches? Should we talk to them about the needs that we have for more money for our teachers? Because of the specialized training. I mean, I think they're the ones that who can really help us frame those proposals. And our operating costs, again, all of that, I think they're really in the best position to guide us as to, you know, when to make those overtures. And then, you know, we're gonna have some of those legislators down tomorrow. So we can sort of preview some of our needs with them informally, you know? And I think Tara, it's really important if you're talking with the legislators tomorrow to disabuse them of the notion that our kids are not special. I mean, they, they may say, well, you know, the normal, you know, classroom has, you know, 15 to 18 kids in it. You know, why do you need to have a ratio of, you know, one teacher and one aide to four or five kids? And you can talk about the multiple disabilities and, and issues that some of our kids have that it takes a lot more. And most people get that when you say it to them. Certainly educators get it when you say it to them. But I think you have an ideal opportunity tomorrow to talk about, you know, the specialized needs that our kids have, separate and apart from other kids. I was gonna ask, do we get the per pupil funding per kid? Or is ours just a general budget allocation?
Yep. Nope, this is Tara. Yes. We do get per pupil funding. It's really a very small amount, very minimal. We rely mostly on the budget allocation that we get from the JBC. And then with the per pupil funding, we put that together.
Okay. Yeah, cause obviously one other way to increase the amount of money coming into D and B is to increase the enrollment. And, uh, you know, I think the legislators, again, it might be an opportunity tomorrow to explain to them that there's, you know, three or 400, whatever that number is, or more potential students out there in the districts of the senators and representatives who would be better served by coming right here to Colorado Springs than trying to be served inadequately in their home districts where they don't have that expertise. And I think the, I think those are issues that are not in the awareness of legislators. There's a lot of new legislators, some of the ones coming tomorrow are, have been around a little bit, a little while. But some of them are not all that sophisticated. And it's a continuing education process to make them aware that, you know, we're really the best choice for all of their students in their districts. And, uh, you know, that's a message that they can take back to their districts. You know, so that we can turn them into recruiters for us.
Yes, yes. Yeah, thank you for that, George.
Yeah, probably just parroting a little bit what Pete said. And I think both on the finance end and in the legislative end, they kind of have interplay. That the key thing is education and, and relationship building right now, you know? I mean, Tara, my experience is every time I go to the, the school in Springs, I'm a little bit in awe as to what's being provided for our students there. And tomorrow's a great start. I wish I could be there with it, but I have some other commitments. But, but doing something like that periodically and getting as many legislators as possible involved in that would, I think would, would support both the goals of the finance subcommittee and the legislative subcommittee. Cause what's gonna happen is then when we do, when we feel like there's an opportunity to move forward to address a need, we'll have some folks who actually see the value of what's being provided and, and might then advocate for it. And correct me if I'm wrong on that, Pete. I feel like even legislation is relationship based. It's not just, uh, just all about philosophy.
Okay, for me, this is Ida. I just want to say thank you, yeah, both for your advice and your feedback. That really helps us navigate, guides us. Yeah, Tara?
This is Tara. I want to add, I forgot to mention another part with funding related to our request for building renovation projects. We just proposed again, West Hall, that project to move our blind school. And do you think it would be beneficial to invite our lobbyist to this, these committee meetings? As we start to prioritize or do we wait until we have more detailed goals identified?
Jess?
This is Jess. I would say, A, it depends on how we pay them. And second, I would say we wait until we have clear priorities. And then maybe we have a goal of, let's say X number, just one second for the interpreter. Of months. We say, after a number of months, we say, come, we invite them. And then we say, you know, here's our prioritized list. You know, we are welcoming your questions.
Yeah, Tara?
This is Tara. I agree, we need more clear priorities, goals first. And then to respond to that question, I mean, it's really just a fee for an annual contract. It's just one, I mean, it's not billable hours, it's just one flat fee.
Okay, yeah, Tara?
I just want to add timeline for the budget request. Right now, for example, for this year, 25, 26, that is already set. So any discussions will be for next year, 26, 27. Those requests are due typically the last week of July, beginning of August. You have to officially submit those requests. So we have time to prioritize and figure out what strategies we want to use. So I just wanted to make you aware of that timeline as we're looking at any of that for next year, 26, 27.
Okay, great. Yes, George?
Um, in regard to that question about having the lobbyist available, if there's no extra cost, I, I think it's a great idea because it, part of what we have to do is educate our lobbyists on what our needs are and what our goals and strategies are so that they can better advocate for us on that. It's, it's hard to capture that just on a sheet of paper, you know, an email. It's easier if they hear voices of people and what they're pleading for, so.
Exactly, yes. Okay, this is Ida. I agree, yes. Yes. So first we will identify, make sure we have those all set perfect before we have the lobbyist involved. Yes, I agree. Good idea. Okay, Tara, any other, yeah, anything else we need to discuss related to finance?
This is Tara. I assume, I guess my only question is if we would like to invite Beth to join this for the next one. I think, you know, there's some things that come up where maybe, I don't know off the top of my head exactly, you know, like per pupil, like I know what it is roughly. I know we have the exact number. I don't know if you all feel that that would be helpful to involve her.
Uh, this is Ida. Yes, for sure. Yes, because always direct answers are best. So that would be cool to have Beth there. Would we be ready to have her at the very next meeting or should we wait? Do we feel ready to have her join that next meeting or what do you think? What does everybody think? Yeah, Megan?
I think it would be really helpful just to get an overview of what we, what we'd even be asking for. And I think that will help us decide what our goals are.
Perfect. Okay, perfect. Jess?
This is Jess. If Beth is willing and available, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah. Okay, this is Ida. Yeah, I completely agree. I know how busy Beth is. But yes, for sure, it would be very beneficial to have that information from her.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions you have, Tara? Anything? No? Okay, good. Okay. So again, priorities, we talked about, we'll start with that. And then should we go ahead now and start with the legislative committee?
This is Tara. So what I can do between now and the next meeting is put down on the document clearly what we want to talk about from today, areas of need, gaps.
Great, yes.
And that, um, I'll also ask my leadership team to see if I'm missing something. Maybe add the next meeting. I think we can review the prior and prioritize and start the discussion for action steps.
Yep. Okay. All right, this is Ida. Then yeah, so yes. We'll see what you prepare for us for the next meeting to talk about, come up with ideas. Yeah, network with people, definitely. Okay. Yes. Okay, so that template that Tara, you know, you're, you know, that we worked on today, that we have that template. So just if you would share that with all of us and it just has some guidelines to help us move forward, moving forward. Okay. Okay, so now we'll talk about the legislative committee. Like what are you feeling that the priorities are there? Tara, would you mind sharing your list as well?
This is Tara. I think honestly, there's a lot of different potential things that we could do. Really for this year. Remember last year we tried to get Lead K. Legislation passed and we were not successful. Also, part of tomorrow's discussion is very specific to Lead K. And really, I think for me, that's priority number one is getting Lead K passed this year. Getting support for that bill. If we could accomplish that, I would be thrilled. Really that has a huge impact for language development for deaf students. And we already know the impact of language deprivation. If you don't have a strong foundation of language, then really that bill requires monitoring each child birth to five and making sure that they're meeting language milestones with spoken English or signing, and that's huge.
Yeah, Pete?
I think one way to relate it, if, if you think it's closely akin, that a lot of legislators are familiar with the READ Act, which says that young kids have to be assessed to determine their reading capability really early on. I, I don't know the numbers, but it's like in kindergarten and they, the schools and teachers have to identify which kids are demonstrating reading deficiencies. Well, isn't that exactly what we're talking about with Lead K? So again, if you make that comparison between READ Act and Lead K, most of the savvy legislators will get it. And then explain why, you know, if they need to read, it's the same sort of long-term deficit they're gonna suffer if they can't read or if they don't have language. So again, I'm just trying to put things in simple terms. When you set up a priority, if you can put it in terms that they really understand, I think it, it's helpful. And they all get READ Act.
Yeah, George?
Yeah, and adding to that, I've felt like recent legislatures have doubled down on it. Not only upheld their desire to, to continue the READ Act, but then required certain professional development for teachers and then for administrators in language acquisition. And so what a great idea, Pete, great idea to, to, to just, just draw the parallel to it. Why wouldn't we have this for our, our children?
Yep.
Yes, yep. Tara?
This is Tara. Absolutely. I believe that we can make ties to when those kids are five and enter kindergarten. They require the READ Act to look at their reading proficiency to make sure they're reading those, meeting those levels in kindergarten. However, if those students don't have a strong foundation of language, when they enter kindergarten, they have severe language delays, significantly impacting their ability to learn to read because they don't have a strong foundation of language. So really, Lead K is what deaf kids need before they go into kindergarten. So they're ready and able to meet their reading proficiencies for kindergarten through second grade. And if that's missing, they will be on the read plan. They just will. I mean, you know, 90% of our students are on the read plan because of language deprivation and language delays. So it's absolutely connected. And we can't wait until they're five years old to focus on. to focus on reading for them. They need to have a prior strong language foundation before. I love framing it that way with that connection.
Yeah. George?
Yeah, and so with that, draw the parallel to the universal preschool program. The whole purpose of starting the universal preschool program is so that students get that head start on literacy before they ever enter school. And, um, and that was a statewide vote. And I, I would think if, um, people were, um, creative enough to add that this should happen for students with certain, um, disabilities that, that the state would have passed it even at a greater level, you know, um, the electorate.
Yeah. This is Ida. Yes, I just love this kind of discussion. I love it. Yeah, you know, it just makes me think even more, you know, all the, everything, the potential things to do, but to, yes, relate it so the state legislators, you know, can see like these licensed, um, teachers of ASL that they need that, you know, that's also part of it. There's a disconnect. We don't have that. So again, going back to the Lead K, that is a huge priority. And I think we should focus on that as well, making sure that the teachers are proficient in ASL. I think that's a second priority to teach the deaf kids. Um, and then again, for students who are blind, making sure that the teachers, you know, are TVIs and they know braille, like to require one without the other, you know, doesn't seem like it would work. So definitely having those two priorities go hand in hand. Yeah. And there's more that we can kind of move around as far as that. What else do you have, Tara? Yeah.
Yeah, this is Tara. Yeah, absolutely. So just so that you're aware as board members, to get your Teacher of the Visually Impaired License for Colorado, it does require, I mean by law mandated, that those teachers must show braille competency and they must pass their braille competency test to get their TVI license. So it's required for all teachers within the state of Colorado. For deaf, teachers of the deaf, TODs, there is no requirement for them to demonstrate competency in ASL related to their licensure. Nothing. No requirements.
Oh, wow.
Um, so that's huge. And again, going back to the READ Act, you know, it requires very specific training to, you know, take on the science of reading. And you have to pass that in order to teach that for K three, um, is required. So similarly, how can we connect this then for TODs? If you're working with students who are signing, but the teacher's not competent, it, you know what I mean? So there's connections there. You know, you must be able to sign proficiently. That should be a requirement with your licensure.
Yeah, Pete?
Is that a Department of Education licensure, uh, rulemaking that they could just do that at the Department of Education and require ASL as a prerequisite for licensure for, um, for these teachers? And if so, uh, that would seem to be a pretty easy ask of the Department of Education. And I, you know, I don't know if you do that through, uh, legislative services or, or lobbyists, you know, that would be a task that you get assigned to them, you know, look into that, find out who you have to talk to, and then get an answer back from, uh, Department of Education. And, you know, because I know when they make a rule like that, they have administrative procedure requirements where they, they have to publish a proposed rule and put it out there to the world, and then they have to take comments on it, and then they implement it. So it, it's, it'll take some time. So the sooner you, you get Department of Education ratchet it up to, to put ASL into the requirements, the sooner it will become a requirement.
Yeah. Yeah, Tara?
This is Tara. Yeah, and to that point, I just had a meeting last week with the person at CDE in charge of the deaf. And so I have been planting those seeds. Um, I've had some conversations with her over the past couple of years. Um, and we've started conversations with her and planning to meet again next week to continue the conversations. But if we, I think getting her support while also working directly with the licensing people at CDE, because she's not in licensure, she's upper deaf, hard of hearing, but specific to licensure is other people. So I, I have already started conversations, but if we could address it with already licensing with a rule change, it would be a lot easier than, you know, to pass specific legislation. So meeting with her again next week, um, I'm not sure she's fully in support of the concept right now based on initial, just very initial conversations. Um, but I will meet with her again and get a sense and see maybe, maybe Paul actually could help with that since it's CDE. I don't know.
Uh, let's see. Yeah, Jason?
Hi, everyone. Uh, this is Jason. I just wanted to throw out there that if you need us to look into the various legal pathways, uh, Tara or anybody else to, to make that happen, let us know. I mean, I trust you, a person at CDE, but we can also work with those folks to figure out what the different, our legal links, just let us know. I'm happy to help.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah, Paul?
Yeah, um, this is Paul speaking. Um, yeah, there are some things that fall under legislation and some things that fall under state rule that is propagated by the State Board of Education. So we can, you know, definitely look into that. Um, and again, that wouldn't really be pushed out of my office or the Office of Sped, that would come out of licensure. Um, you know, um, rulemaking, you know, Pete, you described it, you know, the process correctly. Um, I'll just, you know, say that, um, anytime I've taken something to the State Board, it usually takes three or four times, uh, before the rules are, um, approved. There's tons of, um, feedback that come from constituents all over the state, both for and against whatever the rules are. So we typically have very robust feedback, um, around, um, special education related rules. So, um, it's definitely a, a time process. Um, it typically doesn't happen in just a single meeting. So, um, but yeah, Tara, we can, um, you and Shawna and I can maybe have a conversation about that. And then, um, again, we'd probably have to put you really more in touch with the folks in licensure, um, uh, because that's really where the, the rule change would have to come from.
Okay. Oh, yeah, Tara?
This is Tara. The other thing that I talked about with Shawna, we need also, we need to make sure we're communicating with special education directors to make sure that they're informed and understand what's going on, why it's important, because some of this will impact their teachers. And I think we just need to keep the conversation open with Directors of Special Education too, is important as we proceed.
Yes, this is Ida. And also that typically connects to other topics as well. Recently, they passed a law related to SLP, Speech and Language Pathology, pathology, and then saying that even those people need to have some level of education, you know, degree, even the pairs that work there. So requiring, yes, the SLP also to have them know ASL, you know, because they are working with our children to acquire the English language. It would be best if they're doing that in their language, ASL. So it's connects that as well to really apply to not just what you were mentioning, Tara, but you know, to other professionals as well to include those SLPs. And another one, you know, another thought I've had that we're thinking that we have to consider as a board, you know, one deaf representative, one representative who is blind. I mean, yes, that is hard. Um, who truly to have somebody who identifies as blind as deaf to represent all deaf people, to represent all blind people. Maybe we could revisit, you know, the statute as far as maybe having two deaf, two blind people on the board, just so there's more support and more understanding of those lived experiences with education and what our children would need. So are we considering perhaps that? And I don't know which is more important, like where we want to put that on the priority list. But again, just things that we need to work on, maybe that would be part of it. Anything else? Anything else we want to add for the Legislative Committee? Pete?
Um, yeah, you might get a, um, timeline from the lobbyists about those budget issues, Tara, so that we have a pretty good idea of exactly, you know, when we're going to have to make the overtures to them. I mean, you may know that, but I, I probably used to know that, but I don't have it in my brain right now as to when, uh, we have to start making our budget requests for the twenty-six, seven year. I mean, I thought it starts in the fall, um, but I don't remember exactly. But find out, it would be helpful for us in the Legislative Committee to know, you know, what the timeline is for the, for the budgeting process.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Tara. Sure.
This is Tara. Yes, so for next year's budget, twenty-six, twenty-seven, budget requests are submitted to, um, JBC analysts, typically the last week of July, first of August.
In July.
So early, really, in summer time, summertime. And then it's reviewed and then November, December, typically the JBC has a hearing and a briefing, so two separate meetings where they review our budget requests for twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then the governor tends to sign things, I don't know, end of April. So submissions are due summer. So I think bumping that back more recently.
Uh, Jess?
This is Jess. Pete, that's really important to understand, you know, what Tara's timeline is and requirements are, then plan our goals from there. Um, so same thing with the Finance Committee too. Um, that way we can set up and best support the needs and the asks, um, of the lobbyists about funding or request to the JBC or what have you, so to make sure that we can support you too.
And this is Ida. I do just want to clarify, talking about like the last week of July, first week of August, that is for the budget request for the funding, you know, that proposal from the JBC, right? But we all, this Finance Committee, yes, would have to have what we're doing by like June prior to that, so we can make sure that we are able to propose that by that July timeframe, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, oh, yeah, Tara.
This is Tara. They do require, there's a specific form used for additional, for request for additional funding. So if you are just keeping it the same, it's very simple, but there are additional, additional requests have specific forms used. You have to provide data, justification. I mean, it's a lot with that process.
This is Ida.
Which is fine. I mean, it's fine. I mean, really, you know, we start working on that really in springtime because, I mean, it's really consuming.
Yes, this is Ida. Right. That's why we have, you know, we need the time to justify and support our requests. All of that things have everything documented, definitely. Yeah, but I think this is a good time. Yeah, we have a good start for the committee. I'm glad we're starting this now in support of that. Yeah. Okay, uh, let's see what else. So Beth will join us the following, in our next meeting, answer any questions we may have about the finance part. Uh, yeah, any more priorities? Anybody wants to work on anything else? For either one, legislative? Yeah, anything? Okay, so I think, this is Ida, and I think, yeah, it's pretty good. I think we have a good start. And then Tara's gonna type all of that up for us, um, as far as the template, or she'll have the template. And then we'll all look at both, uh, you know, I mean, of course, focus on your own committee, get ready to start for the next meeting. Be, you know, in touch if there's anything else you need. Yeah, whatever's needed. Yeah. Okay, the network, figure those out. Anything else we need to have added? Or are we done, Tara? Anything else? Okay. Then any announcements? Does anybody have any announcements, anything? I do have one small one. Yes, so I'm a great aunt for the seventh time. Yay, yay. Very excited. Yeah, our family is growing. Yes. So, yeah, very big congratulations to them. I'm excited. So, okay, I think we're good. Um, I think we can finish up this work session. This work is ongoing. Yes. Again, the first Wednesday of the month, so we'll see you on the fifteenth, yeah, October fifteenth for our board meeting. Okay, yes. And, oh, yeah, Tara?
Yes. I, this is Tara. I remember in the next boarding meeting is on campus, so we will have visiting classroom opportunities to see kids, staff. So it is a longer meeting on campus for the next one.
What time is it? What time? What time is it?
Uh, nine thirty?
Nine, two?
Nine thirty, I think.
Thirty-two?
Maybe
two?
To, three, two, at the latest?
Two, okay. So this is Ida. So same as it's always been, like the nine thirty to two PM timeframe on campus for a tour, visit, all those programs, very exciting. That's right, yes. Okay. All right. Well, yeah. I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting now then at five oh nine. Okay? Have a great two weeks and I'll see you soon. Bye-bye. Take care.
Thank you all.
And thanks to our interpreters. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Good job, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Ruben. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you.